The Metropolis City Council is called by the Mayor of the City of Metropolis for Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at one o'clock P.M. In the council chambers of the Metropolis City Hall. The purpose of this meeting shall be to discuss and take possible action to proceed with our alternative to suspend the Franklin Park pool improvements. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Chrisine, Dotary, Paul, McManus, Midnight, and Isabel.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand to pledge allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come today thanking you for the blessings that you have given each and every one. Be with our community, your heavenly Father, as this meeting, each and every decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with the ones in our community that have lost loved ones, dear heavenly Father. Be with the ones that are sick. Be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States. Guide and direct them, bring them safely home to your families. Ask in thy precious name. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Five.
Five, forty-five, twelve.
So moved.
Motion made.
It took me a bit to find this.
Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Chrisine, Dotary, Paul, McManus, and Isabel.
First thing and only thing on the agenda, discuss and take possible action to proceed with for suspend the Franklin Park improvements. I guess we can open it up for discussion. I actually talked to each and every one of the city council on Friday and probably some on Thursday. But I know I talked to everybody on Friday and I think everybody is probably under the same mindset as myself. I think we have some discussion that we probably need to do. I appreciate the report from Chris on the pool and some of the legal part of it and I guess we'll just open it up for discussion and I for one, I for one say we continue the construction until completion. I don't think we can stop because we've got the citizens out here who've done appropriated the money and will fight this other deal on the backside.
And if the money is, I mean, the money's available, right? For us to finish it?
Well, you appropriated enough money to do it, yes. You did in your budget. That's part of the, that's one of the issues even is, could you stop without incurring some additional liability? And I don't think so because you've got a contract with the contractor that doesn't say, hey, we get out if the state doesn't give us the money because you had to appropriate the money to make the contract and you had to, so it was, since this is a reimbursable grant, which most DNR grants are, you have to incur all the costs anyway upfront and then you get your part back that the states agreed to pay. Although the state has said in this letter, don't incur any more obligations, this is an obligation you incurred back when you signed the contract, not an obligation that you're incurring ongoing.
Now, what now, did we, we didn't receive, did we receive any money of that three hundred thirty?
You can't bill it until you get done.
You can't.
You can't bill it. I, here, I've prepared, let me give you these, maybe answer some of your questions, give you something to take, to look at. I've prepared here a, the original project estimates, that is what we have when we submitted, the actual contract cost, the cost incurred to date, what we've actually paid out, and then an estimate of the remaining cost at the bottom. I made a whole bunch in case and bales one on one. The way the original thing was set up, it was estimated it cost about six hundred and sixty-two thousand. The state ordered us three hundred and thirty-one thousand, or fifty percent, whichever works out to be less. Your contract cost was seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. If you remember, we negotiated with the contractor, got that down. So our first change order was a reduction of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. We've added since in a change order, fifty-nine, sixteen, that's where they put the flowable fill in and we had to do that to support the foundation. Architect engineering, those costs were just as they were. That's the design cost, that's what was proposed in the grant. And then there's a thing called CPA report costs, which we've really not incurred any of that yet, but that's, that would have been your total contract cost, seven eighty-four, one sixteen, with one exception. We did agree, because it's outside of the, it's out, it's needed and it was needed, we did agree to do contract supervision using HMG up to a maximum of thirty thousand dollars. I didn't put that figure on there, but in the next item, we'll see the actual costs we have incurred to date. You'll see we got the design, we've paid for all of that, that's what we've paid on the construction, the two fifty-six figure, and then the sixteen-eight is what we've paid thus far on construction supervision. So that's a total of what we paid out, a total of what we'd seek reimbursement for at this point, that's through the ninth.
What about, I spoke to the mayor about it, on FEMA's money? Can we use, if whatever we recoup from FEMA, can we put that towards, will that go back into the budget?
It's gone back to the general, it goes to the general fund, yes.
And use that if we get, if get that back from the state end for it?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, they just, it's general, so catch wherever, whatever's going in there in the general can be used.
I'm for finishing it one hundred percent.
Didn't we budget seven eighty for the initial project and then thirty, so we're at eight hundred and ten thousand dollars in budgeted money, basically?
Probably.
So the money's already there, I mean, we don't have to worry about not having the money. Our biggest issue is, what do we got to do to get our money back from the state of Illinois being that we entered it into a contract with them that we feel obligated them to repay fifty percent or three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of the project?
Right, and I, that's another, that's the other item. That was one of the top questions I figured you guys would have. I prepared you a memo on that as well. It's my belief that, I mean, the first question everybody's having on their minds is, could the state legally do this? And the answer, I believe after two days of research, is no. Now, legal and doing it are two different things, okay? If you're a big enough old boy, I guess you can do pretty much what you want. And I believe that's kind of the heavy hand of the state at work here. Contract and, and keep in mind, we're both subject to a contract. Contract law, I believe, still applies. I don't think the state has the right to hilariously suspend contract law. Contract clearly says the only way the state can not meet its obligation is if the legislature did not appropriate funds. That's it, that is that, the notice you got said, please refer to paragraph four on page ten, and that's what it says, is they can cease if the Illinois General Assembly does not appropriate funds or make funds available. Well, the Illinois General Assembly did, folks, in the last two budgets, and that's what I explained in here, we've looked them up. There was, as I, I think I said, in two thousand thirteen, they put fourteen million in new money into Ozland and carried over eighty-one, eighty million, let's say, or eighty-one million from the previous years. In two thousand fourteen for two thousand fifteen, this budget year, last year, they put in twenty-four million and carried over eighty-three million by specific statute that's been adopted and passed and approved, whatever. The money was there, that's the only basis. Now, prior to starting the project, the state could rescind the agreement, okay? But the agreement, we had started the project over a year ago, year and a half ago. So now there's no basis unless the state were to claim we defaulted, but they didn't send the notice. I mean, it's just like an ordinary contract. If you default, I gotta send you a notice, I gotta give you a chance to fix that default. You've got so many days. Then if you don't, I can terminate the agreement. That's not taking place, that's not even in this letter. So you're very right that the question is to be, what do we do? I think we submit a challenge back. First off, I think we comply with the letter to the extent that we do let them know and submit an expense report on what we've expended through March the ninth, and we'll get that in by next, next week. So we show we've complied with that part. But I think we send it back a letter that challenges the legality or the authority of the state to suspend this grant and make them prove it if there is in fact authority.
Are all the other municipalities, I'm just gonna interrupt you, but are the other municipalities doing the same as we are?
Right now.
Marion, Carmel?
Uh, Marion, actually, they were ready just to seek reimbursement, they'd finished their project. Carmeldale, I tried to reach out to them yesterday and didn't get an answer back. I, the, I talked, it's not Carmeldale City, it's actually a park district up there that has that grant. So, because I talked to the city attorney, he was vaguely, he was a little familiar with the process and the problem it had. His understanding, they had started the project too. He didn't know what strategy the employees, I told a couple of the councilmen before we started, he did tell me, we believe represents, the park district, it's a law firm that I've associated with before, working for, I'm gonna find out what their strategy is. I mentioned also earlier that I think there, I know there are other municipalities affected. I'm kind of curious to see if, based on an email I got when I got back, when we got back last week, our friends in Marshall, I said something about a grant being suspended and they said Ozland, as if they had gotten the same thing, maybe wonders, so I'm gonna find out and I wanna see what kind of some of the, some of the other municipal strategies are gonna be. I think that's one of the things we do need to do is reach out, find out. Maybe we can pool our resources somewhat to object to this.
Well, if we do a crash action, can we also go against and have a legal fees? Or can we do that against the state?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to look more closely at it. Most of the time, if the state fails to pay something, you just wind up in the court of claims is where you wind up and then you have to, and then the legislature has to make an appropriation to fund whatever the court of claims finds. I mean, it's a long drawn out process, but.
Uh, Ms. Trable, I had done a report on this also and I can see now the difference between your report and mine. We're close, very close. But what I didn't do was add the architect fee in there and the CPA fee, but to date, I mean, we've gone too far to stop this. We, we got these people on site and we need to build this pool and we've got the money to build it. And to my, to date, we've paid the contractor two hundred and forty-three thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. We paid the contractor that. And the only thing that I wanted to discuss is the possible way that we can come up with some money that what we were given back in March of two thousand and fourteen. And one of the ways was the sale of easement and the option for the future easement for the existing and future billboard in industrial parks, forty-five thousand. Have we received that?
No, we've been, I tell you what we've been waiting on, we, you've approved it and they've approved it, we've been waiting to get the legal description, they had to get a survey, which we just recently got, and they've been wanting to come back down to finalize that deal, so yes, that's.
And it is forty-five thousand.
It is forty-five thousand.
That's the only thing I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
Now, the other thing was the payoff of outstanding loan by purchase area laundry of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That wasn't possible ability.
Yeah, that was paid off last year.
We have that in the general fund, I assume.
Well, you probably spent it by now, I'm guessing. It came in in the previous fiscal year.
It don't matter, I mean, we're still, we take money out of general fund to pay for this, where it comes from, where it comes from.
I mean, you got paid off.
The FEMA or the billboard or whatever, I mean, we've still got to pay it and we have to build this thing, we can't not do this for our kids. I mean, there's too many people that use this park and this one and four, we, we have to proceed. Well, we're still looking for that money and even though it went into the general fund, it's still spent, we can still say we could use a part of that money out of the general fund. And the payment and the little taxes from the electric fund was four hundred and eighty thousand suggested at that time. That was nine hundred thousand dollars coming in to pay for that pool. And the fourth item was a grant from the loan and hotel motel tax, if needed, would put us over a million dollars. Do you remember that letter, Ms. Trable?
Yes.
So you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now. We have some sources, potential sources, that we can put money back in general. I don't think we've, we've not charged the payment lieu taxes yet, yet this year, haven't we, Tricia? I didn't think so. So that's one we have not charged. But of course, and for those that don't know, payment lieu tax is, what that means is, we charge other utilities for using our easements, whether it be a five percent utility tax or a pole attachment fee. And so, what, it's an internal charge, but we charge our own departments for using our, our right of ways and our easements, okay? So, and legally we can do that, which allows us to take money from, say, electric fund and move it over to the general fund, that's what Mr. Carroll was talking about. So that's what we've talked about. We've done it in the past and most towns do, so that is one source of possible, and we have not done that yet this year. We have it in the budget, but we did not.
You say it's in the budget to do it?
Yes, it is.
We, we have the money in the budget, we have the people on the site and we don't want to pay a relocation fee and all that goes with it. I say build this pool, pay for this pool, and then look at what you need to do in other places if you've got to make some cuts. I don't know what, I haven't read the grant papers here, but I don't know what the other grants, there's a lot of other grants that's been cut. I don't know if that's gonna affect us in other places then or not.
Right now, we don't think so. We don't have a whole lot else out there.
Sacred schools, federal.
It's federal, it won't be affected. Your Twelve Street project, when and if you would start it, is all federal, that won't be affected. The only other thing, somebody asked about, well, what about the highway paving project that's coming in? That's a capital project, that's not a grant project, so I really don't have anybody to know it. Now, the, the project at the, likewise, the project at the airport is probably not, I'm not sure it's a grant project, I think it's a capital project. State funds a very small piece of that, most of that's federal, most, and a small piece of it's ours. It's like five percent of us, five percent of the state and ninety percent of federal. So it's probably not impacted. Right now, I would say probably minimal impact as far as existing things that we were aware of, but it all depends on how deep the state goes behind this, you know? I mean, there are, there are other areas that, you know. Yeah, there are things that they might tap, we just don't know. I mean, at this point.
Well, is the finance committee and the council satisfied in knowing what reserves we had and feel comfortable in going ahead and building this pool? Or do we need to get a report from the treasurer stating where the money's invested, the return and so forth, and then get one from Tricia as to what we have in the general fund and so forth? I think the money's there, it was reported in three thousand, uh, two thousand and fourteen, we had three point eight million in excess, and I, I think that money's still there.
Well, the fortunate part about it is, is many people sitting around this table have been here for many, many years. And we've always operated under the program that we never go beyond our means. We've always had a reserve, we've always preached to each other, you know, to every committee here and every project we've ever done, that yes, we can do this, but we have to make sure we've got this reserve over here. We've never spent that reserve, we shouldn't. And now, fortunately, under this bad scenario, through the guidance and cooperation of not only my office and every other office and the city council, we're not in a dire thing. And in giving, Ms. Abel, I mean, she's done a tremendous job on a fifty-some-odd-year-old pool. Our pool itself is in good shape because we've spent money year after year and the parking recreation committee has always, if Ms. Abel says it needs to be painted, the parking recreation committee and the city council has always made sure that we take care of what we've got. Now, I was actually asked today, well, would you all have done this if you'd known that there wasn't any grant money available? Honestly, probably unless the state would have just said, come down here and said, we probably would not have done it if we, if we weren't going to receive three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of that money back. There's not a doubt in my mind that nobody here would have said, we need to spend eight hundred thousand dollars, but.
I agree with what you're saying, but on the other hand, that pool house was in such bad shape that the state would come down here and said, you don't have a choice, you're going to do it.
It was outdated and it was a bad choice.
Yeah, they had, they had already told us for about the past six or seven years that it was just a matter of, like, this may be your last year, this may, and they were serious because it was in such bad shape.
That's the way I remember it.
Yes.
They, they were right on our doorstep.
Right.
Had to tell us.
Yeah.
You're gonna make a change or you're gonna shut down.
Right, and there was no way to retrofit it and make it handicap accessible, and that is key right now, that, it has to be done, period.
And we had jackhammered, we had jack, we had jackhammered about every piece of concrete down there and the floor and the walls to, to keep the water flowing and, and things like that. So, you know, some things happen, maybe I always try to look deposit side, things happen for a reason. We're going to have a pool house and a pool that is going to last longer than probably, more than likely any of us last, so.
So at this point, right now, our motor fuel tax in the district is safe?
Nothing's safe right now.
They'd do it real soon. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't received any notices yet, I'll put it that way. We haven't received any notices.
This is, it's still.
They're gonna do it next week.
As much as contracted and done with is, evidently any contract can hold up. So I'm not gonna say it's safe because they could just decide it, but that's already the notice.
It's been lit. I think it's safe.
It's as done as it can be done in our hands.
Everything I see on Twelve Street that they might do is to come up and mess with motor fuel tax, that's been noticed, and they could do that.
Well, they're actually looking, you know, they, you've got some that says it ought to stay where it is and your motor fuel tax, you know, is established off of a gallon of gasoline, so, you know, if the price of that all goes down, people, you know, it, it changes.
The thing is, until this year's budget finally gets hashed out at the state level between governor and legislature, none of us are really gonna know what's, what's safe or what's coming back to us or not. I mean, it's just gonna be this tug of war from now till goodness knows when. It's supposed to end May thirty-first, but it never does, so it'll, it's likely to get, be in July or something for all we know. We just have to figure out ways to continue to operate and go on.
You know, the thing that we can be thankful for now, we're in a better position than the city was when the pool was off the alley back there. I went spreading in there and they had to shut it down and they sold the building to the Elks Club. It's a very fortunate.
You're telling your age.
Well, it's true.
I remember when that pool was like.
Guys, I'm prepared to make the motion that we proceed with building the pool house.
I'd like to say something first, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Before you.
Go ahead.
I, I agree with all of you, I think that we need to fix that pool house. Young kids in town have got to have things to do. I learned to swim at that pool, I took swimming lessons there, that's where I learned to swim. My boys, I bought them a season pass every year and they went to the pool, they gave them something to do, they didn't play ball. And like Mayor McDaniel said earlier, all kids don't play ball, some kids don't want to play ball, they'd rather go swimming or something like that. We've got to give those kids something to do.
And our seniors.
It affects you and I probably more than anybody here because most of the kids that go to that pool are from our ward.
Our percentages.
The pool does have a very good attendance, likes to Ms. Abel and her crew.
Well, I'm impressed to see the numbers that she gave us, how well spread out it is. I mean, had you not have provided this, I wouldn't have had that idea.
Well, that's one thing I wanted you to realize is that everybody in this town, in this county uses that pool.
Oh, yeah.
And it's almost equal. I mean, some use it for other things, like some run it for the pool parties, some use it for the senior citizens' water aerobics, some, and a lot of them use it for the swimming lessons. The pool passes are just a huge hit, so, you know, they all use it, all of them do, all ages.
I don't see where we have any choice but to do it.
Well, we have to do it. Well, and you don't, you don't know how much I appreciate the fact that, you know, everybody is in agreement, every budget we go through, every committee we go through, no matter what we buy or what we spend, we've always provided a nest egg back there if something does happen, that we don't have to worry about. Now, we do worry about it. Believe me, I, I worry about it a lot, to the point where that, but, it's just like, I, I think, I don't remember who, we entered into an agreement with the state of Illinois in good faith and, we, we signed the papers, we dotted the, the i's and crossed the t's and, and Chad and I talked Thursday and Friday, you know, what do you do? Well, fortunately, it rained all day Friday, so we didn't have to worry about those guys working Friday. But what, the true thing is, even if, you know, we need to move quickly for one reason, if those guys get offsite, right now, they're behind on their work program and we certainly don't want to give the contractors an excuse that says, well, you told us to quit.
Right.
We need them working every day, we need to complete it, and I promise you that we're going to do everything, I've already talked to Chad, we're gonna do everything we can do to talk to the contractors, talk to the people and see if we can't make some concessions that we can do this cheaper, still get a quality pool, you know, building, and maybe we can do this and maybe we can do that, to curb that cost enough that we can save part of that money in construction and maybe, maybe we don't paint the inside of the crew, the thing, and maybe Chris's swimming people paint the inside.
We can say that, we've done that before.
Things like that, so we can save them money.
I don't, well, you're saying, but I don't think we ought to cut one corner before we finish it, have it one hundred percent, paint it.
Well, I do too, because, I mean, I think we should, because then if we don't, then when we go back after the state and they say, well, you didn't do what you said you were doing.
Oh, you gotta do everything that the contractor says is gonna be done.
Do it one hundred percent.
The city's got the money, they're gonna have a reserve fund, a comfortable one, they're not gonna be like they was in the nineteen fifties when the employees couldn't get paid on payday and had to wait two weeks on their check. The city is in pretty good shape right now and will be after this pool house is built.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion if we proceed with the building of the pool house as we were going to and if Mr. Abel continued to look at legal options to, for us to recoup our money from the state. We do have a motion to proceed, to proceed by Mr. Chrisine, the second by Mr. McManus. Any further discussions, anything anybody else needs to say here? Call or roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Chrisine.
Yes.
Dotary.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Isabel.
Yes.
Before we do, call for adjournment, Mr. Abel has one more small item.
And this may be a little bit timely too. If you remember, last city council meeting, we approved a draft of the intergovernmental agreement with Shawnee Mass Transit. I sent that off to Ben, Ben Yonther or Yonther, I'm not sure how you pronounce his last name, young man that was here and talked to you all, he said it was fine. They, in fact, he filled in the dates for how long he thought it would take to complete this project. They, I did learn a little bit more from talking to him, they are building multiple facilities like this throughout the district, they got enough money, I think, to build at least three, maybe tomorrow. Yeah, because he told me Union County and another county besides this one are building that. And, but, I thought this was timely because I asked him this week, I sent him an email this week, had they received any notices relative to their grant money, because this is grant money they're gonna build this way? And he said, no, he was not aware, he was not even aware other communities had gotten notices on local, you know, city government on, on anything. So, well, maybe it's just coming from DNR at this point, I just was curious if you had received anything. And he said, no, they're all. They're all, but he did indicate all their money's state money and it's coming through IDO, so.
You must've gonna check what email they might have sent it to. Since they said our notice to a non-system email.
Since they filled this back in, I'll probably put this on the agenda for next, next month. Yeah, of course, some changes there too.
Yeah. Motion made by Mr. Presine, second by Mr. McManus. All the roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Gaudry. Paul.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.